Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall Meeting for October 20, 2020. I call this meeting to order, and again, please ask the Clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Carbonaro?
Present.
Daney?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Present.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Building and zoning Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five items on building and zoning tonight. First up is Buc-E's. The proposed location will be at the southwest corner of Route 59 and Stern's. The petitioner is seeking a site plan, special use permits, and variations for a new and improved gas station. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Grill.
Okay, we're ready. Thank you, Trustee Ranky. So, the petitioner is requesting a site plan review for a proposed Buc-E's convenience store and gas station on two lots currently occupied by the Mobil and the Sonic. Mobil is here, and this is the Sonic. They are also requesting special use permits for an automobile service station to bring the existing use into conformance, to sell packaged liquor, and for outdoor sales. The station would include a 4,700 square foot convenience store with 10 pump islands, and it would operate 24 hours, seven days a week. The existing buildings and fuel canopy on the Mobil site would be demolished, along with the current Sonic building, and the new convenience store would be proposed on the Sonic site. So, the canopy and the gas pumps would still be located on the existing Mobil site, and then the convenience store would be located on the Sonic site. The building would have a maximum height of 22 feet and be constructed with concrete masonry units, and have the appearance of brown brick and fiber cement panels. I have a elevation here for you. And the post for the fuel canopy would also be wrapped with the same material as the building. They are also requesting variations. Two variations are for the front and corner side yard to allow the fuel pump canopy to be located within the setbacks, and then the final request is to reduce the interior parkway landscaping along both 59 and Stern's. A traffic impact analysis has been submitted by the petitioner and is being reviewed by our villages, by the village's traffic engineer, and the village's environmental consultant has provided the staff with recommendations, and those have been sent to the petitioner. And the petitioner is here tonight if you have any additional questions.
Well, I know I'm encouraged by moving the curb cut on Stern's Road further west because after the reconfiguration of Stern's and Route 59, even though it doesn't seem quite fully reconfigured at this point, but I think that curb cut is very far east, and it seems to be an issue with the eastbound traffic. So, I find that very encouraging.
That's a really awkward turnout when you're leaving the gas station there now, so that is encouraging.
Are there questions or comments from the committee?
I just had... What is the variance on some other examples? Do you know, Roberta, as far as this proximity to the curb of structures? The 34-foot variation with the 60-foot required with the pump canopy?
Typically, most of the canopies that we have in town have always requested variations for those, so that's not atypical.
This seems to strike a bell with me as being more of a variance than we've seen before.
The canopy up on Lake Street at 555, the 7-11, they also asked for it. Again, most of them do. The buildings actually meet the setbacks, it's the canopies that typically don't.
Yeah, okay. I just don't want it to look awkward when somebody's driving down there and it's really close to the road, but it doesn't seem like it'll be that close, right? It's still 30 feet away. Okay.
What type of variances were they requesting as far as landscaping along Stern's and 59?
So, they are requesting, and staff does understand that they do have a hardship because of the taking of right-of-way from both 59 and Stern's with the intersection improvements. However, they are asking to also eliminate the requirement for any type of trees along both street frontages. We would like to continue to work with the petitioner and have, we believe that one tree could actually be located along the 59 frontage, possibly in this location here. And, or I should say here. And then, we would like the petitioner, in two cases, one, to save a tree that's approximately located here, and the existing landscaping, and I think I have a picture. We would like the petitioner to save this existing landscaping here that's along the private drive towards the Home Depot. It's established, it's mature, the tree is there, and we would like to continue to work with him on that.
Is this something the village arborist looked at?
Um...
Or is it still...
I don't know if it's reached the village arborist yet.
I would have to agree. I'd like to see the petitioner keep that tree and possibly add a tree or two along 59 and Stern's Road. So, I encourage the petitioner to work with staff on that.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, as long as it's not too close to the intersection.
Sure.
Yeah.
The petitioner is here tonight.
And the short kind, not to kind of grow into, to kind of grow into our wires all the time.
You don't want an oak tree.
Roberta, who owns the, if you go to the Sonic right now, and you pull in, you pull in by Home Depot, and you make that first left turn by the Sonic, yeah, that right there. Who owns that property right there? Because when you come out of, if you're in the Home Depot parking lot going westbound, and you make a left turn to go up to Stern's, I'm sorry, a right turn to go to Stern's, that turn right there is very tight. You have to swing into the other lane to make that turn to go back to Stern's from the Home Depot parking lot, right where you're at.
Right here?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Exactly. Who owns that property? Can they widen that a little bit so that turn's a little easier to make?
Well, actually, that would probably be on this, currently, this is, and the private drive is owned by Home Depot.
All right.
Okay, that's part of their lot.
That's what I figured.
Now, you're really talking about...
At the, yeah, right there in that section.
Yeah.
When you make that right turn to go up to Stern's, you swing into the other lane, and there's trees there that block that now, and you can't see if somebody else is coming. We find that when we go to the Starbucks. We come back, and we make that turn to go down to Stern's, you know, just wondering, it's very difficult.
Maybe that's something they could, they could try to...
Yeah, let us take a look at the...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because there is more traffic going right through there right now because the people do that exact thing. They go into Starbucks and back out multiple different ways.
Is there a behind the gas station or the store part, is there like out to go to, like if someone gets gas and then they're like, "Now, I'm getting Starbucks," they can go out the back part of that to Starbucks? I'm sorry, I cannot... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, if they get gas or go to the store there, can they go out the back to Starbucks?
Is that still going to be open, the back entrance to Starbucks?
Yes, so...
Good.
Let me go over that with you. There are two cross-access easements currently existing. The first one is here. Starbucks is located just south off this map, but this is the first access easement, and that will remain. And then here is the second one, and this actually is to Sonic right now, but this would also remain open and provide access to the building for the convenience store. So, there's no direct access currently for the Sonic right now, and that will remain the same. So, access is here, access is here, and then you come in and come out this way. And then there's the curb cut that we've mentioned before that has been moved westward. It was a lot closer, and the petitioner worked with DuPage County to get that approved to have it remain, they widened the curb cut, and they did move it further west. So, that was something that DuPage County wanted to see.
And there's also a curb cut at the Mobil right now, right there, yeah, where you're at.
Yep, right.
Exactly. If we could turn into the Starbucks off of 59, going into the Mobil and then down it's...
Yes, you can. Yes.
Yeah. That'll stay?
Yes.
Yeah, don't worry, Peggy can still get to Starbucks.
I want to thank the petitioner for choosing Bartlett to upgrade this property that they have. I think it's going to be a great addition once it's done, so I look forward to it.
Definitely. All right.
So, then we'll forward this on to the ZBA and the Plan Commission for hearings.
Okay.
Which brings me to the second item, the Brewster Creek Business Park Lot 2A over on the Cook County side, site plan. And Ms. Grill?
Okay.
Tell us a little bit about the project, please.
All right, so this request is for a site plan for a 435,000 square foot warehouse building on 25 acres in Cook County of Brewster Creek. Here is Spitzer, and where I'm pointing to right now is the McKesson Building, so this would be directly north of the McKesson Building. This building would be designed with the potential for four tenant spaces, each containing a 2,500 square foot office area. So, the building would be approximately 44 feet tall, constructed with insulated concrete, precast concrete panels, and they would also be requesting a reduction, a couple variations for a reduction in the required number of parking spaces from 463 to 423, and to allow the loading docks within the corner side yard. One curb cut is proposed along Spitzer here, and then three curb cuts are proposed along Jack Court. And with that, the petitioner is here tonight if you have any additional questions.
So, one of my questions is obviously based on some parking issues we've had on the DuPage side of Brewster Creek. Was there consideration to possibly land banking those 40 spaces that we're seeking variance on? Is there ability to do that in any way?
There is, and staff requested that of the petitioner, and they did not want to go that route.
Okay. Well, I would encourage everybody to keep talking and see if we can figure out a way. You know, on the one hand, we don't want to push a developer to build parking spaces that they don't necessarily need on day one, but if they need it on day 365 or day 900, there needs to be some provision for that. Because once you back yourself into a corner, well, I'm mixing my metaphors, but once you back yourself into a corner, then there's a lot of hand wringing when there's no place for the employees and the equipment to park, and we did find ourselves in a bit of a pickle. So, I'd really like to see some more attention to that, and I'm sure there's a way we could figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming there's no parking along Jack Court or any of the other streets out there?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, no...
That is always a concern, considering what we went through out on the DuPage side. You're exactly right, Trustee Ranky. There were all kinds of cars parked along the street, everywhere you could look, there were cars on the street, which means that the business is succeeding in hiring people, which is a good thing to have. However, it's also a huge problem with the fire department, so let's keep that in mind while we go through the negotiations. Yeah, you can imagine, yeah.
May I respond to that?
Yeah.
We'd love it.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Brian Quigley. I'm with Counter Commercial Real Estate Developer of the Project, and I've built maybe 30 or 40 of these around the city in the last 30 years. And what I've noticed is that we generally build twice the number of car parks that we need. For this project, you know, as Roberta called out, four corners, 2,500 square feet each for the office. Generally, the office is about four parks, four people per thousand feet, so 10,000 feet, four parks, 40 office employees. Maybe you should double that, you know, call it 80. And then that leaves about 420,000 square feet of warehouse space. And generally, for high bulk storage, what this is going to be, this is going to be 36-foot clear, pal it in, pal it out, in all likelihood, that's the customer type that we're going for. Three, one employee per 3,000 square feet, generally.
What's the math on that?
About 120.
120.
So, call it 180.
Oh, you're going to sit around with 100 and some parking spots not being used.
I'm building 420.
Yeah.
So, I'm already building twice the number that I really believe that I'm going to need, and I've got, and I can prove that in buildings that I've built in Elgin.
That's good, that's good to hear. That really alleviates some of our concerns. So, I mean, we really had a real issue and required somebody to build a parking lot out there on the DuPage side. You can see where it's at, it doesn't look good.
Yeah. You know, Roberta and I have talked about this, and land banking car parks in the middle of the truck court really doesn't, you know, it's not what we want. It's not safe with car parks in the middle of the truck court. We think this is going to be a two-customer building, or a one-customer building, really. And so, in order to add more car parks, we'd have to subtract building area. And I think I'm already parked twice as heavily as it really...
I think if you can bring up those examples of what you just described, I think the board would be fine with that. I would be, anyway.
And we can certainly go out and take a look at how it's operating in Elgin.
Yep.
Okay.
And if the only location to bank those parking spots is otherwise occupied, I guess I'd like to hear other alternatives if there are any. If there aren't any, then there aren't any. You know, it's a site, it's a site plan issue. But I'm curious on both sides.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions or concerns from the committee? All right, well, thank you very much.
Busy night for you tonight, Chairman.
Busy night for you tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. The third item is County Farm and Stern's Road Concept Plan Review. That's over at that northwest corner, which has been vacant for a long time, and I know there's a lot of site work that needs to be done on that, on that land behind the Dunkin' Donuts gas station. So, Ms. Grill, could you tell us a little bit about the project, please?
Sure. So, the petitioner is requesting, this is a concept plan review, and it's for commercial development on the four and a half acres, as Trustee Ranky said, at the northwest corner of County Farm and Stern's. The proposed concept plan consists of a 6,000 square foot daycare center, shown here, a 5,500 square foot restaurant with a drive-up facility here, stacking is shown here. They would also have an outdoor patio area, and a 14,000 square foot retail center, and then a 3,700 square foot car wash. And the petitioner is actually looking for direction from the board on how you feel about the layout and the uses proposed on the site before they move further with final engineering and contacting DuPage County for their proposed curb cut on County Farm Road.
So, on the daycare center, do we have a sense of where the outdoor playground will be?
Right here.
Will it be closer to County Farm or on the back?
On the north side.
And then what sort of screening are we contemplating? Because obviously, the neighbors are going to be concerned, and I think we want to start talking about that sooner rather than later.
At a concept level, that typically doesn't come up. We did let the petitioner know that there is residential to the north, and that we would be looking for some heavy screening.
So, you'll have to refresh my memory. I remember that there has, that there's a lot of site work that has to be done, a lot of soil that has to be removed. Are we looking at any berms as a form of screening?
At this time, we haven't seen that because we haven't seen any engineering plans.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know I'm kind of jumping ahead, but I'm trying to think of, you know, if we can push, you know, save the cost of removing the soil by berming it somehow and providing the screening for the residents, we're, you know, killing two birds with one stone.
Okay.
I would just like to add my idea, you might say I'm crazy. I'd almost like to see the daycare center moved farther to the left, because there is some discussion about the Elgin-O'Hare 390 dumping out into County Farm. I don't know if there's going to be any expansion there. Me personally, I wouldn't want to go to a daycare center, drop my kids off at a place that's right next to a busy intersection like that. Just a thought.
Yeah, I think the visibility for the retail portion of that would be way higher if they were along County Farm than having it tucked in behind. So, I mean, obviously, they have expert branding people and marketing, but I think that would make more sense visibility-wise for the businesses that are going to lease that retail space. You don't really need visibility for a daycare center. Move that to the corner where it's a little more quiet for the kids, back where the retail shop's at. That would be my only comment, but other than that, I think the space like that would be well-used with all that stuff in there. I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, I agree.
Was the petitioner at all concerned, isn't there a car wash at that gas station?
There is.
No. But they...
Oh, there isn't. No, there's a Dunkin' Donuts and a...
That's right, it's a drive-thru.
It's a drive-thru. Yeah.
A big Dunkin' Donuts drive-thru.
Okay.
Yeah, Roberta?
Yes.
Where have they built before? What other projects have they done?
Um, they're...
Their history?
Could you come up?
Welcome. Okay, thank you. So, the 14,000 retail square foot place, we are planning to do exclusive liquor store, doctor office, pizza place, insurance, T-Mobile, Verizon office there. So, we are working with several vendors right now.
He wanted to know where you have developed before. Where have you built before?
Okay, so, I'm not the developer, like, you know, we own the land, and we have, this is our first project, but I've been in Bartlett for the last 12 years. We own BP right there, and we just own BP on 59 and Sterns. So, I'm from the retail side.
What restaurants do you have interested?
Uh, the pizza places, so Papa Savario, probably they are planning to get in. On the restaurant side, the 5600, we are working with Burger King right now.
With who?
Burger King. Burger King.
Oh, Burger King, okay.
And...
Chick-fil-A would be good.
Pardon?
Chick-fil-A would be good.
Chick-fil-A.
To bold it?
We'll try. And on the daycare also, we are planning to get, we are working with top two franchise right now, CDS Academy and all that.
Fantastic.
My only question is, I don't know if staff has looked at it pertaining to the car wash that they want to add? Have you looked at the stacking of cars and how it will impact the rest of the parking lot?
We were anticipating that the stacking would be right here, so there's a lot of stacking. So, they would come in this way and head southbound and exit here.
You're not going to be problematic at all?
The stacking or the exit?
Either one.
Um, no, because originally, they had a curb cut directly across from this exit, and we, over a period of time and several meetings, asked them to eliminate that curb cut.
Good idea, yeah. Thank you.
Good, thank you for being here. All right, well, thank you very much. Next item is 630 Golfer's Lane variance. Thank you, again, Ms. Grill. You're working harder than I am, so...
Okay, here we go.
The petitioner is here.
Yes, the petitioner is here tonight. Okay, so, the homeowners at 630 Golfer's Lane are requesting a 5-foot variation from the 20-foot rear yard to construct a three-season room addition to the back of their home. So, right here. The residence is currently located 25.25 feet from the rear property line. The existing deck is located 15 feet from the rear property line, and decks are allowed to encroach 10 feet into the rear yard. So, the petitioners are proposing to build a 10-by-14 three-season room in the same location as the existing deck. And then they would construct a new deck just to the north of it, measuring about 10 by 12. Both of, both the room addition and the deck would be located 15 feet from the rear property line. So, at the October 1st, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting, the petitioners presented their case and submitted photos of other three-season rooms in the subdivision. They submitted a letter from a Realtor indicating her opinion that the addition would improve property values within the neighborhood. The public hearing was opened, reopened, actually, and several members of the public, including the neighbor to the south, voiced opposition to the request and presented photos from their deck, while other property owners in the subdivision indicated they were in favor of the proposal. The zoning board of appeals discussed the petitioner's variation request and believed that the views to the golf course would not be obstructed by this three-season room, and they conducted the public hearing and recommended approval.
All right, thank you very much. Seems relatively straightforward. Are there any comments or concerns from the committee?
Was the, was the person that opposed, sorry, yeah, was the person that opposed it because they felt like it was obstructing a view? Is that what you said? Yes. More so to the north, northeast view, not to the, directly to the back.
Yeah, I think the pictures kind of tell it all. These other pictures are nicer. I have no issues.
Yeah, looks good.
All right, so we'll forward this on to the village board for a final vote.
Next one.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for being here. The last item on building and zoning tonight is the 1070 Dartmouth Drive variation. This is an interesting one.
Yes, yes, it is.
This is a, this is a reason why the people in, sitting in these seats need to look at how a subdivision's laid out very closely before we vote on it, because that is a bizarre lot.
Yeah.
And my daughter goes to Sycamore Trails, and so I am, in fact, familiar with that backyard you have there, and that's a real challenge. That's a real challenge. So, with that preface, Ms. Grill, what can you tell us?
Okay. So, the petitioners are here tonight to request a 6-foot-tall solid vinyl fence in the corner side yard to replace the existing 3-foot-tall wood fence. I believe I have a picture. So, here is the existing 3-foot-tall wood fence on the property line, and here's the cul-de-sac leading back to the bike path, back to the school, okay? So, let me point something else out. What is unique to this site in their west, what I'm calling the west property line, is that they have a bike path within a 10-foot easement on their property located here. Okay, so their property line is in the middle of the bike path. The bike path is 10 feet wide, the property line sits in the middle of it, they provided an easement to it. The property owner to the south also provided an easement to allow for this bike path construction to lead to the school. So, the petitioners are also requesting to install two ground-mounted solar panels. And these would be located in what, according to the zoning ordinance, is the corner side yard, so located here. Here is what I'm calling the front yard, and then this is the corner side yard. And the zoning ordinance only allows solar panels to be located within the rear yard, which is behind the elevation of the house, so only from this point here. So, the solar panels would be located 10 feet from the corner side property line, and would be more than 15 feet from the house. So, at the August 6 zoning board of appeals meeting, the petitioner presented their variation request, and the members of the zoning board of appeals were shown a fence that was located, a 6-foot-tall fence that was located on the property line. And so, it was approximately here, and it was one foot off of the bike path. The zoning board of appeals directed the petitioner to meet with the staff and revise the location of the fence, and continue the public hearing to the September 3 zoning board of appeals. I believe the zoning board felt that because the village had recently relaxed the rules to allow fence, 6-foot-tall fences in the corner side yard to be... in the corner side yard to be set back ten feet, that they should, um, work a little bit more with the staff and try to set it back further from the sidewalk. So, at the September third, twenty-twenty zoning board of appeals meeting, they revised their plans and had the six-foot-tall fence located two feet from the sidewalk and three feet from the bike path. The zoning board advised the petitioner to continue to work with the staff and revise the plans to increase the setback from the sidewalk, sidewalk along Dartmouth Court. So, they continued the public hearing again to the October first meeting. At the October first meeting, the petitioners presented a revised plan showing the six-foot-tall fence located now five feet off of the sidewalk along Dartmouth Court and fourteen feet from the bike path, which is what the zoning board, um, wanted, a clear view to the school and to pull that fence back away from the property line and the bike path as far as they could. The, um, zoning board, uh, reviewed the revised request. They conducted the public hearing, and they did recommend approval.
Can you tell me who, who holds the easement for that bike path?
So, the easement is actually on their property.
Well, right. So, it's on their property, but who's the grant, grantor or the grantee of the easement? Is it the park district? Is it the village? Is it the school district?
I, I'm thi-, I honestly don't know. I think it might be the school district.
I'd like to know who did this.
I don't know if that's close enough to the school to be the school district's property.
I, it might be, we, we might actually-
I can't believe they can draw it up and, anyway.
I can find, I can find that out.
Yeah, I, I would be curious, although that wouldn't be dispositive to my vote. I, I, I want to commend you for, for working hard on, on the site plan. It's extremely challenging, um, and obviously, the staff has put a lot of work in on this. Um, it seems an appropriate case for a variance for me. But I don't know if the committee has any other concerns or-
Well, I think it was along Sterns Road where we, um, allowed those six-foot fences, right? Um, for the side yards.
No, actually, it's, it's all yards, uh, as long as they're ten feet back. And then, on fifty-nine and on Lake Street, the major arterials, we allowed them one foot off of the property line.
Yeah. I think that's a really, um, uh, a lot of negotiations and well-done by both sides, and the ZBA should be, uh, uh, should be, um, congratulated on working with them to come up with something that would be plausible. I think, um, I, I, as long as, would, would now be the time to see if there's any way to fix these, these property lines or, I mean, I couldn't imagine. I'd probably have a hard time selling that house.
It just seems very odd.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's worth a quick look at the-
We actually have in several locations leading to schools with the bike paths there and the easements. We, it's actually happened several times.
Wow.
Is the, is, I mean, is the owner upset with the property lines?
Nope, he's here.
Oh.
Well, it just seem, it just seems very odd to me that you would have a-
You can, you can make comments if you-
Public, a public easement like that, that's used by so many people and for so many different things on, on someone's, well, for example, would you want that in your backyard? Um, just seems very odd to me. I don't know how we really change that at this point without some, some deeding, but, uh, uh, it's interesting.
Hello, everyone. My name is Caesar Wileshnewski, and I'm the owner of the, uh, duplex on ten-seventy Dartmouth Drive. Uh, if I could pass this around, there's some pictures with, um, exactly showing.
Thank you, sir.
There's three of them, actually.
Oh, I'll, I'll pass them down. Thank you.
And, um, just wanted to correct that the, uh, fence is not going to be vinyl, but composite, which is completely different than, than vinyl. It's going to be composed out of that, something like that, which is very sturdy. Uh, there's no wood in it. There's only, uh, about twenty percent of bamboo, and the rest of it is different, um, plastics and different kind of, um, uh, recyclable, uh, things. So, basically, um, uh, the warranty on this is over a hundred years, al-, it's over almost a hundred years. Will not rotten, will not be damaged very easy.
Definitely going to look better than the fence that's there.
And it's definite, and it's both sides. It depends, you know, this thing has both sides, different, um, designs and different, and colors and stuff like that. We're also going to do, on the south corner over there, we're going to leave the tree there and, yeah, exactly. And along the fence, we're going to create, make, um, some kind of a, I'm not a designer, so I'm probably going to be someone designing the, what kind of bushes that we can put there, you know, so it looks some, somewhat nice. We are, we actually had to, uh, import that from Europe just to, uh, to have that here and to have the best quality and the best looking thing that we could find.
Good. I think it looks nice. I wouldn't have any issues. I don't, I don't believe I'd have any issues at all.
Looks good.
Yeah, no, I certainly don't. I think it's great to, eh, bring more solar to the village, too.
Yeah.
I think that's really cool.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll pass this on to the, uh, the village board for, uh, for a final vote then.
Yeah, so in two weeks, we'll vote on it and be good.
And be back.
Thank you for coming.
You want these pictures back, sir?
Um, it's-
We'll keep one copy for the record-
Yes.
And then, if you want them-
Yes.
We'll, we'll get them back to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all we have for, uh, building and zoning this evening.
This?
I thought there was something else, but-
All right. Um, next, uh, we have finance and golf committee chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we have on the agenda this evening, the golf simulator contract extension.
You get three, three minutes.
And, uh, oh, I'm done with that. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Scott. We've had a lot of discussion about this, and I prefer Scott take it.
Thank you, trustee Denny. Um, first, let me apologize. This was not in the packet, but much like a lot of the businesses here in town and quite frankly, the country have had to deal with a lot of curveballs. So, we're going to propose a curveball to you this evening relative to the simulator. Um, we put these sketches together, uh, in the last couple of days after the packet had gone out. Um, so we kind of want to talk to you about some of our thoughts going forward with the, uh, simulators in the bar and how we would like to, uh, um, create some more revenue. If you want to go to the next slide, Roberta. Currently, um, the winter simulator is on the north end, um, and it's typically there from early November to sometime in March, depending on how the weather, uh, plays out. Currently, we rent that machine. The revenue that we bring in, we have to give sixty percent of it back to, uh, the rental company. And given the uncertain trajectory of COVID-nineteen, we looked at this as an opportunity to probably bring in some more revenue for the village. Um, so we're looking at your direction and your guidance in terms of a small, uh, build-out. And let me take you to the next slide. So, currently, if you see the pro shop there on the right, the area to the left would be the proposed build-out. And given the fact that that's currently in the pro shop, that's really not, uh, creating any type of revenue. Our merchandise sales have been somewhat stagnant over the years, and we can sell merchandise as much as we do now with the current spa-, with the space that you see there on the right. We can create the same amount of revenue in the pro shop with the space on the right, and we could create a boatload of more revenue with the space on the left if we build that out to an all-year simulator room. So, your next question is probably going to be, well, what does this cost? And we'll take you to the next slide. One more. Keep going. So, this is our revenue that we've received in the three years since we've had the simulator. The simulator has generated in excess of fifty thousand dollars over three years, but us as the, uh, rentor of the machine have only been given, have only, uh, amassed twenty grand in revenue because of the contract, uh, with the rental company. So, we did some estimates. We looked at what would it cost to do the build-out and what would it cost to purchase our own simulators. And again, these are, uh, in terms of the build-out costs, that's a rough estimate. We've spoken to a couple of people about it and have had similar numbers. So, we're pretty comfortable that it would be around that thirty-five thousand dollar number. And we can say with great certainty that two simulators would cost about, uh, thirty thousand apiece for a total investment of ninety-five thousand dollars. If you want to take it to the next slide. So, our break-even point is approximately three years, um, and I think it's pretty conservative, uh, for several reasons. One, the, uh, simulator that would be in that simulator room would be up all year. So, when it rains, when it gets dark early, um, when we're busy, um, we'll be able to generate revenue every single day, uh, with that simulator. And, um, I also think it's conservative because we'll be able to, uh, change our price points how we feel comfortable at the golf course, not in terms of an agreement with the owner of the machine. Um, so, so we're just looking, uh, at, at possibly, uh, going this route and kind of wanted to get your feedback and see if you have any questions.
Um, just before we start, um, I, I commend the, the golf course, um, staff and Scott for, for really, um, thinking, uh, of new ways to provide a simulator. I think we've been scratching our head about it for a number of years, you're looking in the basement, looking at ceiling height, seeing where we could carve it out.
The patio.
The patio. I mean, we put outdoor, uh, tents and all kinds of things. I don't think they left a stone unturned. But I, I do believe that this, um, particular time, um, is right in that, um, now is the time to do that construction because we would not be greatly impacting the golf course, um, services, um, especially with the, the COVID driving people out of the, the, um, lounge area. Um, for budget purposes, I would, uh, recommend that the build-out we do now and take advantage of this winter and, um, plan to purchase the simula-, uh, simulators in the upcoming budget.
I, I would just like to-
At one point, that break-even point of approximately three years does not include food and beverage. Having two machines would create a lot more synergy, give us a lot more leagues, have a party-like atmosphere, uh, that would lead to bigger restaurant bills. So, it does not include food and beverage, and it also does not include, uh, having that simulator up all year. Those numbers are based on our winter, our current winter bookings with our current prices, which we would be able to flex based upon how we see fit. So, I, I do believe that three years is, um, I think we would break that, uh, without an issue. Yeah, it's a conservative estimate.
I, I concur with the, uh, you being conservative. I don't know if this is working or not. I concur with the fact that you're being conservative with the numbers because we've used the simulator, uh, you know, since it's been there. And the sixty-forty split that we had, you know, forty percent was only gener-, and we only received that, the village only received that. And we did. We looked at putting simulators in the basement area. We looked at simulators on the deck in the back. We looked at putting simulators e- even in the, in the banquet area, partitioning that off, and, uh, it just wasn't feasible. So, if, if there's an opportunity for us to take advantage of this, and I know other courses have done this and been quite successful, I think it would be a benefit to the village, and I think it's something that, uh, we seriously have to look at. But you're, could, I, I tell you, you're conservative with the numbers. I just know. So, thank you.
I would just like to add, this is an outstanding idea. Um, my question is, because I'm, I'm not familiar with the contract, um, the rental machine that we have right now, if it breaks down, i- is there a maintenance agreement that we have, or do they fix it because they own it? And if we buy two that we own, uh, we're going to have to pay for some type of maintenance agreement if it breaks down?
Yes. Uh, currently, if there is an issue, uh, the gentleman who leases to the machine, leases us the machine, does come in and fix it. Um, however, I would imagine that if we did go the route of buying simulators, um, part of that, you know, that request that we have, uh, would, would have a built-in warranty, uh, as a part of that. Um, we've only scratched the surface in terms of what we would get with the simulator, of the, the price. But, uh, you raise a good point, and we would make sure that, uh, we wouldn't get it on day one, there's an issue, and, and we're stuck. We would make sure that we do our, uh, due diligence in terms of warranties and maintenance agreements.
Enough room in that part of the current clubhouse for two simulators?
Uh, if you want to go back.
It doesn't seem like there's enough room in that part of the clubhouse for two simulators.
Go back a slide. No, see, there would only be one simulator in that room all year round, and the second simulator-
Oh, so we would have one all year round and the other one would be put up, um, seasonally?
Correct.
Ah, gotcha. That's perfect. Yeah, yeah.
So, so what is the lifespan of a golf simulator?
About three years. You have to update yours. It, it's just a computer. So, you have to update the simulator constantly. Um, but the overhead projectors they've got down now, it's slowing way down. I'm, I can answer this for you because I do. But, um, they were really choppy, and now they're really, really nice. Um, and there isn't a whole lot farther they can advance. It's more in the angle of the, yeah, we'd probably want to get a three-screen in that extra room.
And to add, add to that, the current machine that we have in there now that we lease, uh, is a machine that it's about, I think it's five years old, and we've used it for three seasons, and we've had very little issues. So, it's an older machine, uh, that we have used for three years, and I, I think we've called him in maybe twice, and he's always been able to fix it within twenty-four hours.
Well, again, I, I agree with, I agree with Vince. Um, eight years ago, no one on the village staff would ever have dared to touch the pro shop. So, you're being incredibly innovative-
Yes.
And I, I, it's a sea change in the behavior, uh, of the entire staff regarding the golf course. It's, it's to be commended. But you see where I'm going with my concern about, well, if this machine wears out in three years, are you coming back and you want another sixty thousand dollars? You want fifteen thousand dollars for an overhead projector? I'm concerned about the, the cost to keep this going. Uh, it does make sense to do it, especially now, given everything that's going on in the world. But I do worry about those, those sort of legacy and maintenance costs.
I thi-, I think the advantage, and, and I'll just make a comment to his comment. I think one of the advantages that we have as a village is Chris can do a lot of the computer updating and computer work as a staff member. So, that's an advantage you have, because this is basically just a, a computer program.
Did you just give Chris a promotion?
Yeah.
Congratulations. Additional work, additional work, no pay.
And the other thing is-
Very good.
That I, I want to say about this is just not, just not this time of the year, because before the COVID hit, we were on that simulator. That simulator was rented for the last two years on a real, real, very regular basis. In fact, you'd call up and try and get, you'd try and get a time on the simulator, and you couldn't because it was booked. So, by having two simulators, that gives us the opportunity of having two groups in there. So.
How many people at once? How many people play on a simulator at once?
Oh, you play four?
You can do four, six, eight.
You do six. It di-, depends on, on the game that you want to play. You can do a scramble, you can do individual.
There's a shocking amount of leagues out there now for simulators, because it only takes an hour and a half to play eighteen holes on a simulator. Takes four hours on a course.
Currently, with one machine, we have groups. With two machines, we'd be able to have outings and parties and gatherings.
Right. And we used it, remember, we used it at the Christmas party.
Yep. So, you do, do you need a ranger?
You never did it?
You need a ranger to push people along, the ones that are, you know, going slow?
Mm.
Another, another job opportunity? No, this is a, this is a great idea. I just brought up the maintenance, uh, portion.
I can't think of a better use for that space.
Yeah, it is, that is a great idea.
All right. Well, so I think the general consensus of the board is to, let's blow that wall out and get it ready to go.
And then, this gives the, the new trustees time to look at some of the detailed materials they're going to provide and some of the history of the revenue and the issues we've had out there and learn how to golf on a simulator.
Thanks. I can use that.
All right, thanks, Scott.
All right. Mr. President, that's all we have this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Denny. Next item, we have police and health, uh, chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. On tonight's agenda, we have, uh, discussion of changes to the Village of Bartlett employee benefits plans. Um, I can't see, but I'm assuming that Mr. Lesh is there this evening?
I'm here.
Okay. Um, before, before he begins, I would like to ask one simple question. Um, do we have a head count of the number of employees that are insured on this policy?
I, I-
Head count on the number of people insured?
Um-
Probably in different classifications, is I'm, I'm guessing what he's asking.
Yeah, it, it doesn't matter. I mean, we have three hundred and, three hundred and some odd employees?
No, uh, full-time employees, we have one hundred and fifty-nine. That would be eligible for the plan.
That includes both, both, um, the police, the public works, and the admin?
Yes, that's all full-time employees, correct. Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, um, uh, Janelle, are you giving the presentation this evening? Okay. So, um, Janelle, are you giving the presentation this evening?
I'm, uh, trustee Carbonaro, I'm gonna start off, um, just to kinda give an, an overview of what we've been up to the last few years. Um, our approach has been to bring our health insurance benefit program, um, to the village board ahead of, uh, our budget, uh, annual budget review for discussion, um, so that we have more time to consider, um, the different options before we're in the middle of just approving the budget. Um, that was a change that the board had asked for a, a few years ago. So that is how we've been, um, coming to you in the fall with the insurance program. Um, we've set a course of proposing cost-saving measures, a mix of options and plan designs into the package, and we work with our employees to explain those changes and give them the knowledge and the tools that they need to be careful consumers of healthcare services. Um, then we implement those changes, we evaluate them and their impact, and then we reckon, uh, reconcile it and recalibrate the program with the help of our broker, who's here tonight, um, and based on what's working and what's not working, and in terms of, uh, reducing our overall, um, health insurance costs. So last year, um, we did not have a full year of data to evaluate, and we, um, did not make, um, significant adjustments to the plan structure. Um, tonight, what we're proposing, um, is significant, and, uh, Janelle and Kevin Lush, uh, our insurance broker, are here to, um, walk us through those changes that we're proposing. So go ahead, Janelle.
Just, just for the-
Thank you, Paula.
Just for the benefit of the people who weren't at the insurance meeting three weeks ago, we discussed removing the PPO and going with just an HSA. I would like to know what the cost savings on that is, um, in addition.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna cover.
Okay, well, there's some guidelines that I'd like to, I'd like to put forth so that we can, uh, present to the board members who weren't at that insurance meeting what we're actually discussing. Um, number two, there is a, a contribution of seventeen hundred dollars per employee. That's an additional two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, item three, we discussed, um, the payment that we make to employees for not taking the insurance, um, and we need to discuss that. Um, item four is there were some ancillary Aflac insurance-type, um, items that we wanted to add, and that was to be at a hundred percent, uh, paid by the employee. So when you present this package, I like to split that stuff out so that we can look at what those costs are. And with that, I'll let you present your, your case.
Okay. Um, thank you, trustee Carbonaro and Ms. Schumacher. Um, so, again, like, as, as we stated, it's been a process, and we committed to, um, making changes to manage costs, uh, benefit costs to the employees and to the village. And in the past three years, um, we've saved, or we've made significant reductions to the tune of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and that's actually being conservative. This year, I'm pleased to present, uh, we were pleased to be presented with a zero percent increase for our health insurance premiums. Um, and again, like Paula had stated, we didn't make any changes last year because we didn't have a significant amount of data to make any significant changes. Even being presented with the zero percent, we were committed to continue to look at changes that we could make to benefit both the village and the employees. And I'm pleased to, um, we're pleased to look at this benefit as we're offer, we're gonna be offering a PPO plan with an HSA option, which is a health savings account, and Mr. Lush is gonna explain that to you. But by a- just adding that plan to our options, we're going to be reducing, um, the, our costs at, to a tune of a hundred thousand dollars. And that's if nobody enrolls in that plan. Um, and I'm pretty certain that we're, we are going to have employees that are interested in enrolling in that plan, and that's gonna be even more of a savings for us. But I'm gonna allow, um, Mr. Lush to present to you the, the details and how we arrived at these options for our employees in the village.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Probably should've coordinated with everybody. Uh, probably have to eliminate half of my, uh, presentation here. My name's Kevin Lush with the Rockets Group. Uh, I guess I'll just skip right to the end. So, so with, when, when you add a plan, sometimes, what Blue Cross does in the past, they will, when you have, um, multiple plans, they will balance, um, increases and put them across all the plans. We have an HMO, we have a PPO plan currently that, um, is what we consider a national PPO, so it's, it's, it's large in the state of, uh, state of Illinois. Basically, it includes all the medical hospitals downtown. And then we have another PPO, which is a smaller network, which includes some of the smaller, um, well, not the smaller hu- uh, hospital systems out here in the burbs, but basically excludes the medical and the research hospitals downtown is really what it did. The biggest thing that it did in the past was that it eliminated, um, the smaller network option eliminated Northwestern Hospital. Um, before it became Northwestern Hospitals, it was CDH, Delano Hospital, that, that system. When Northwestern bought it, it, it eliminated. So the reason we had the two different PPO plans was because of that. We didn't wanna eliminate that system, but we also wanted to still be able to give people the option to be able to use those research hospitals downtown. Um, so if all things stayed equal and we didn't do a thing, like they mentioned, we would have a zero percent increase. Well, we, I guess, increase, decrease, whatever you wanna call it. Um, but because we added a plan, Blue Cross then has to go back and they have to rebalance. They have to actually charge the different premiums and the different, um, different plans. By doing that, it created quite a savings. Actually, bulk of the savings was in the HMO plan. Blue Cross's HMO of Illinois is one of the best HMOs right now in the nation. Um, it's doing very, very well. Um, and now with the onset of COVID, it's actually doing even better than what they thought. The biggest reason being is that decapitated rate, they pay their doctors the same thing every month, whether somebody goes to the doctor or not. But what was eliminated this year is all the elective surgeries, all the, the thing that would take them outside of that, um, primary care physician. And because of that, the claims that they expected to incur over the course of the year just weren't there. So, um, we started, uh, we started last spring, and then in the summer, we got with, um, Blue Cross, and we started negotiating a little bit. We knew we had a little bit to play with there, so was very happy to see that they gave us that, that decrease. Um, we're probably being a little conservative telling you a hundred thousand dollars, to be honest with you. But with that said, this has been part of our five-year plan. We've been trying to, one, educate the employees, um, offer plans that cater to the networks and the utilization that they present. Um, and now, our next step, offer what we consider a consumer-driven plan, a high deductible health plan, health savings account, where they pay dollar one into the deduct- deductible. Um, and what, uh, trustee Carbonaro was talking about was one of the plans that we presented was taking some of the savings that you would get from moving from the PPO plan to the high deductible health plan, and contributing that back to the employer, employee, eh, into their health savings account, which they can use dollar one in order to be able to pay for prescription drugs, pay for office, um, pro pays. Um, many people will come to us and say, wait a minute, now I have to pay dollar one. Before, I would just go pay twenty dollars to, um, the doctor.
You gotta do the math for them, Kevin.
So, well-
I have to do the math for them.
I don't know if I can right now. A lot of math that goes involved in it, but essentially we are. That's what our plan is, to educate them on the math, because every single dollar that they pay to those doctors, every dollar that they pay to those drugs is going to go towards their deductible. So essentially, they're getting more coverage. And the fact that we're gonna contribute money to their HSA, they're actually not paying it out of pocket until they get to the point where their HSA money runs out, and now they have to pay into their deductible. And what we did is we set that amount so that that difference between their deductible, which is twenty-eight hundred dollars, and fourteen, seventeen hundred dollars, I forget what I was recommending, is the same as what their out-of-pocket would have been had they been with that other plan. So it's just gonna take a lot of, um, effort on our part to just educate the employees and show them exactly where their dollars are going, how this is going to benefit them, and then how this is gonna make, um, why this is the better plan to be on. And why we wanna do this is because when you look at, from Blue Cross's point of view, if there's still, we have lots of people going to utilize doctor visits or do- use the RX, they're still paying. So, yeah, we pay the doctor a twenty-dollar copay. Blue Cross is still paying that doctor an additional amount on top of that copay. When we have a twenty-eight hundred dollar deductible with a high deductible health plan, it doesn't pay any copays or anything in that. We've now made the attachment points. We call it an attachment point where Blue Cross's insurance kicks in. We've now increased that significantly. So you take fifty employees out of a PPO plan where maybe they're using twenty dollars here, using, you know, utilizing the plan a little bit more than they need to. We put them into a consumer-driven plan where now they're paying out of pocket, same amount they would've paid before, but now they're looking at their dollars, it benefits everybody. Um, also, when we're putting money into their HSA, it's a benefit for them. If they don't use it, they keep the money. So we're looking at trying to really enhance the program. I think this is the next step. We used to come in here and talk to you about, you know, self-funding, about partial self-funding, things like that, options that are still on the table, um, option that is not available to us just because of our claims history right now. Um, but these are ways that we help teach the employees what is out there and how to use the health plan.
And Kevin, I would just say that, you know, we've been, um, pushing our employees to understand their health spending, um, more intimately. Um, we've done a lot of, uh, Janelle and Tracy and Kevin, they've done a lot of work, um, having one-on-one, um, sit downs with our employees to, to do the math, like you had said, Mayor. Um, we do them, um, we encourage spouses to come in and do that training as well, because sometimes they're the ones that make the, those healthcare choices. Um, uh, one of the, uh, things that I think, uh, trustee Carbonaro was getting at is we have, um, seventy-eight employees in our, uh, HMO, fifty-one in our PPO, and in our, um, Blue Choice PPO, we have about twenty-five employees there. Um, one of the things that we're recommending, because the HMO is such a strong, um, option and such a affordable option for us as well, um, we are recommending that new employees are defaulted into the HMO program for at least one year. Um, we feel that, um, once they're in that program, they will find the, the value of it and probably would stay. So we want to, um, make it an easy decision for those first-year employees.
Yeah, walk me through this class that they go through. Are you actually literally lay- laying the, here's what you spent last year-
No.
And this is what you're gonna spend if you go with this HSA?
Um, no. We're, we're really laying out claims examples. I, we can't really tailor exactly what an individual, we know the claims that are being made, but because of the HIPAA protections, we don't know specifically who this is. And it's more of a group class. I mean, it's, it's gonna be, I think everyone's starting to get used to Zoom meetings, so, um, we've been doing a lot more of them as an agency, and I'll tell you what, I, I don't know if we'll ever go away from doing these, because the difference between doing employee enrollment meetings with employees sitting there and doing it on Zoom meetings is that that spouse is sitting next to them when they're doing these meetings. So a lot of the questions that are being asked are being asked right there. But they're very generic, but they're very detailed and exactly like, I mean, it goes from, hey, you take your child to the doctor, this is what you're paying, this is what you're gonna pay on the high deductible health plan, this is what you're paying on the current PPO plan. And we go through different claim scenarios.
Okay.
Um, one of the areas that-
Are we requiring all of our employees take that course?
We do, yes. And actually, again, this year, we will, and-
Is there a test? Cause there might not even be a test or something.
No test, but we actually, Tr- and Tracy's not here this evening, but Tracy actually meets with, I, I literally had, um, a, an employee, um, his wife is, uh, actually is, um, uh, she has a, a, a disease that's not curable, and so their situation is very delicate, obviously. They spend a lot of money on health insurance and, and the additional costs that go along with that. And they sat down with her and evalu- she actually sat down with both of them, evaluated not only his spouse's plans, but our plans, and they actually ended up going with her insurance this year. But, you know, they're gonna be bouncing back and forth, it looks like, maybe. He, he contacted me within the last couple of weeks, and her prescription drugs all of a sudden skyrocketed in, under her plan. So we're gonna, again, sit down with them and evaluate their situation and, and, and look at options for them, but, um-
Yeah, so we can't do, we can't do the dollar-for-dollar in the class that, um, Kevin does, cause that's a group setting. But we will, uh, we are committed for employees that have special needs and, and more complicated situations to do that one-on-one.
What, what I do appreciate, what Kevin's group does do is, like he said, they'll provide a, a specific example of someone with, you know, a pregnancy and then, uh, an illness, and they'll, they'll look at those costs under each plan, the HMO plan, the PPO plan.
Specific examples of something that could happen.
Exactly. And they've done a, they've done that in all of the years that they've been working with us. But, again, it's, it's, it's an educational process for not only the employees, but their families, because they all need to understand how this affects them, you know, bottom line, dollar-for-dollar, you know, plan comparison-wise and things like that, so.
So one of the areas that is always a concern when we do those classes is when something catastrophic happens, something that's completely unexpected, not just the common cold or the flu or something, geez, I shouldn't even say that now, but what, um, so what Blue Cross has done is they provide ancillary, uh, coverages, um, like trustee Carbonaro was talking about, they have what's called an accident indemnity plan, critical illness indemnity plan. Many of you will know them as Aflac products, right? Well, this is, Blue Cross also sells those as well. And what they are is they're indemnity, basically cash, when, uh, for certain critical illnesses happen, and you have to go to the hospital, and it's list, in the list on this, uh, plan, you'll get a five thousand dollar check, and it's for the employee, spouse, and the, um, the children. Um, why do we like pairing that up? Because normally that is, what is everyone's biggest concern? What if a catastrophic event happens? Yes, you gave me half of my deductible, but now I need to come up, say we're in a car accident, now I have to come up with five thousand dollars in order to cover this cost. What do I do? Well, here's what happens. Um, so by doing that, Blue Cross said, okay, if you guys do this, we'll give you one percent off on your, um, plans across the board, which essentially is going to cover the cost of the critical illness and the accident plan, um, for everybody, not just the people that are in the HSA, but across the board for all employees.
Good.
So, um-
I have a question, Kevin. HSAs can have a significant tax advantage, can't they?
Correct.
Can you maybe say?
Everything is pre-tax. So, um, you're only allowed to, if you're an individual, you're only allowed to, uh, put three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars into it annually. Uh, and you, as a family, it's seven thousand one hundred dollars. I looked up my numbers, Janelle. So I, I just, I forget the numbers many times, cause it changes every year. It essentially goes up fifty dollars. But you can only, only that amount can go into your account. So if your employer is contributing, you can only make up the difference. And that, that money is pre-tax, and it never goes away. Um-
And it grows tax-deferred.
It grows tax-deferred, correct. And it can also be reinvested. So, um, if you get to a certain point, some banks will take it, put it into a money mark- money market, so you can make interest off it. When you turn sixty-five, you can utilize it for long-term care, you can use it to pay for Medicare.
Tax, tax-free, as long as you're using it for qualified.
Correct. Yeah, the only time you, you'll get taxed on it is if you go and buy your gym shoes, Scott, we were talking before. So, yes, yes, you can still use the money, it is still yours, but if you use it for a non-qualified event, you'll be taxed on it.
It's not gonna really return that much anyway.
No.
Not yet, you never know. Come on, we're gonna have to go long haul.
All right, let's wrap this. Um, what, um, we're gonna get a bite at the apple again? Like, what's the next step on this?
Uh, our next step is we're going to, um, actually evaluate another, um, evaluate each of those plans, put together the education program. Um, open enrollment is when, Janelle? Starts in November. So we'll get the education platform up and start, um, talking to our employees and doing the, um, the number crunching for them.
What's the, um, what's the incentive not to take the PPO? Is the, uh, out-of-pockets for the PPO, uh, twice as much, or are they the same?
They'll be, they'll be the same.
Okay, so what's my incentive to go to the HMO? The whole, the whole purpose of this was to get rid of the PPO because it's the higher premium.
There's lots of incentives.
I get, I'm not hearing it.
What's the incentive to move from the PPO to the HSA?
Um, you're getting money into a health savings account that you'll never lose.
Oh, okay, so I choose not.
You have dollar.
The, the purpose is to get rid of the PPO so that everybody's in the HMO?
So that everybody's in the HMO?
Yes.
What's your current out-of-pocket for the, uh, PPO?
Um, the one that we're talking about is twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the individual and two thousand, three thousand seven hundred and fifty for family.
So that's the PPO that we offer? Are we moving away from one of the PPOS?
So we have two PPOS. So we have what's called a blueprint PPO, and then we're adding the blueprint, um, high deductible health plan with the HSA. We're probably looking to try to get rid of that one. Um, and, and it really comes down to our sales ability, to be honest with you. I mean, I'm going to make sure that people go into, um, that health savings account. As far as I'm concerned, the health savings account plan and the HMO, to me, if we had everybody in those plans, your plan would be doing very well. Um, you've moved your attachment point on the PPO, and now Blue Cross is very happy because they're not paying out dollar one. And you all, if you're there in the HMO, Blue Cross- And if they're in the HMO, Blue Cross would be very happy because their HMO is doing very, very well, and you're pooled with a great number of other people. So I, my recommendation would be not to get rid of the PPO if it is paired up with the high deductible health plan.
You need to increase the maximum out-of-pockets for the PPO. Otherwise, nobody's going to want to move. You're not comparing apples to apples. For $1,250, I'll stick with the PPO, even though the premium's probably almost double.
But the way that we've structured it is that with the contribution into the HSA, your out-of-pocket is exactly the same.
Is the PPO a high deductible program?
We're talking about two different health plans. We're talking about the HSA, they're both in the blueprint PPO network. One of them is eligible to have an HSA paired with it. The other one does not, has the lower deductible.
So the PPO, they're not, those people, if they choose that plan, aren't able to participate in the HSA?
The people that choose, yes, the people that choose the non-HSA-eligible plan cannot have an HSA, correct?
Right, so again, because you just said they'd be able to participate in that. No, they wouldn't. So there's really no incentive to keep both of the plans. The premium for the HSA policy is.
Oh, okay, I understand what you're saying now. You're saying that we shouldn't keep the other plans, is what you're saying. Just eliminate the one, which eventually is what we plan on doing. And we plan on moving as many people from that one plan into the HSA plan. That's our goal. I don't think that, in my opinion, in past enrollments, when that's been done, there's a little bit of backlash you get from the employees. So I'd rather still have that plan sitting there and then also offer, I mean, it comes down to us. I mean, the pressure comes down to your broker to be able to sell them into that HSA plan. And I believe we'll be able to do that. I think we've incentivized them enough to the point where it's almost a ridiculous decision not to go into that HSA-eligible plan. We also have to, we also have to take note that there's also some Medicare-eligible people that are in that other PPO plan that we're not going to move in the HSA because you do not want to be contributing into an HSA to, which I think is a retiree benefit. So you have to take that into account as well. The other area is that we're also going to be looking, if people are just not willing to do it, we're going to be looking to move them into the other network because at the time, we had the two networks because the Northwestern Health System was not in that smaller network. It is now. So there's a lot of people that may be paying higher premiums in the blueprint PPO that could be in the Blue Choice PPO, simply because they just didn't have their doctors prior. And since then, there's been negotiations between Blue Cross and Northwestern that opened up that PPO. So our goal is try to eliminate that one.
Okay, so what I suggest is on the PPO, raise up the deductibles to the same as the HMO, $2,850, $2,600, so that they're comparable.
I didn't hear a word you said.
What I suggest, what I suggest on the PPO is that you increase the maximum out-of-pockets to $2,850, $2,600 to match the HSA program. Can we get that?
We're having a heck of a time hearing you. Maybe if you've got specific questions, you and Kevin could meet.
We've already done that.
I think the program that we're offering right now is our best opportunity to move ourselves forward in the direction that we want to go. We're committed to evaluating, like we have in the previous years, looking at what the migration is between those plans and making the necessary adjustments. I think we can continue to do that. And if that, you know, drops off one plan and makes one more robust, I think we can do that. But I think the plan, as we're presenting it, is the next best step.
Okay, just so that the board understands.
Does anyone else disagree?
Just so that the board understands, we're looking at putting $1,700 into 159 people's HSA. That cost alone is $270,000.
It would not be 159 people.
How many people do you predict you can move to the HSA?
My goal would be to get 30 people.
How many?
30?
30 times 1,700, yeah.
You got 78?
The way we broke.
Come on.
I didn't hear it, sorry.
You got 78 in there now.
There's 78 in the HMO, there's 51 in the PPO, there's 25 in the Blue Choice PPO. We're trying to move people from the standard 51 people in the PPO to an HSA model. We can get 30 of them, it's going to be a big savings. All right.
And then based on, based on the numbers, by moving those 40 people in there and contributing 1,700 and putting an accident indemnity plan in place, you could still stand to save about $1,500 per employee.
All right. Let's wrap this up, Vince.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Lesh. We will be moving into, we'll be adjourning to executive session to discuss the sale of village-owned property pursuant to Section 2C 6 of the Open Meetings Act. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Zwansky?
Yes.
We are adjourned to executive session.